Right, like the story used to be like anything over ten bucks.
But you don't want to capture the conversation about the front?
Yeah, the air is hitting it now.
It is.
Oh, man, you were gonna be grumpy tonight.
Just keep eating Tootsie Rolls.
Put another Tootsie Roll on the lap like that.
Stick one right in there.
Pusycall.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for February 12th. Could we all start by rising and having our Chief of Police lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, our Chairman, Mr. Lemire, is not going to be with us tonight, and I hope he is enjoying himself. First item on the agenda is a review and approval of consent items. We have the January 8th meeting minutes. We have January 11th meeting minutes in bond hearing. January 15th meeting minutes with Ekman Construction. January 19th meeting minutes with Ekman Construction. February 3rd meeting minutes in deliber- of the deliberative session. A accounts payable manifest for January 30th of one hundred six thousand three fourteen and seventy seven cents. February 6th, forty two thousand one seventy one ninety eight. And February 13th of seventy one seven thirty two and seventy seven cents. We have payroll manifest for February 1st of ninety seven thousand three forty three and nineteen cents. February 8th at forty eight thousand two hundred and sixty seven cents, and February 10th at fifty one thousand seventy seven dollars forty six cents. We have Dec- December reconciliation from the Town Treasurer. Application for current use, and veterans credit. Anybody have any items that they wish to remove or discuss?
I make a motion we approve as read.
I have a motion to approve by Mr. Brunel and second by Mr. Schaefer. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstain. Motion carries four zero zero. Uh, any other items for additional business or other business? Hearing none. Public input will occur no earlier than 6:15 PM. First item of business, Conservation Commission resignation, Richard Husband.
We have anything to talk about here?
Uh, other than you received, um, an email, Mr. Husband submitted his resignation from the Conservation Commission. Um, and typically the Board will, as a formality, accept the resignation.
Board, any discussion? Do I have a motion?
Do you want the, the motion as you wrote it, or? Uh, so I'll move to accept Richard, uh, Husband's resignation as a member of the commi- Conservation Commission, and ask that, that our town administrator send Mr. Husband a letter of, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, thanking him for his years of service to the town of Litchfield.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do we know why he resigned?
I think we all have a good idea.
Am I the only one in the blank, in the fog, I guess?
Did you see the emails that he sent us?
I saw those, that's what they called, okay.
Uh, I mean, I, I have no idea for the real reason why, but he, um, seems to be unhappy about the actions that the town has taken with, um, Darapond and the depletion of the water level. He feels that we should be a little more proactive. I mean, I don't know if that's his reason for resignation or not, but...
That's, that's the way I understood it from the email.
The resignation follows one of his last le- one of, one of his last letters, so, okay.
Um, second item of business, River-
We have to need to vote on it.
Oh, we didn't vote, sorry. All those in favor of accepting the resignation, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstain. Motion carries four zero zero. Second item on the agenda, River Access Project Update, Conservation and Recreation Commission. Who do we have to speak about this?
You have, um, Jason Burnin from the River Subcommittee and myself, Joan Kibben from the Conservation Commission.
Come on up and sit at a wonderful table.
And I understand Troy talked to John Bryant last year.
And I thought he was going to try to be here, but, um... So I'll just quickly introduce, um, you know, the reason why I wanted to have this on the, on the agenda. One, we, we know that, uh, this project is most likely going to be starting up in the spring. The Board of Selectmen encumbered funds five thousand dollars towards the project. And I think that we're going to probably have some in-kind services that will help with the construction. And I want to make sure as everything starts up, uh, you know, it's probably going to be just a couple months away from the project startup, that we know who is in charge of the project. Who's the, who's the one board or committee that's going to oversee this project? And who are going to be the, um, volunteer citizens that are going to be out there working on the project every day from start to finish? And because there's been a lot of people involved, we've had the members of the Rec Commission, we've had, uh, Conservation Commission, the Board of Selectmen, and we have the Subcommittee, which was created by the Conservation Commission, uh, which I believe is probably out there, you know, thinking that they're going to see this project through. They're working on it right now. Joan has submitted an application, uh, for a driveway permit, um, from New Hampshire DLT. So things are in the works, but I, uh, I think it's really important that we understand, what group is going to be doing, uh, the volunteer work to get it started, see it through to finish? And if there are changes to this project, any scope of work, um, who's going to be, what board is going to have the authority to make those approvals? And I, you know, this was one I wanted to get the Board, I brought this to the Board's attention, uh, at the last meeting, and they didn't want to make any decisions until they met with some representatives from the Conservation Commission, because the property is owned, or at least overseen, by the Conservation Commission.
Right, it's owned by the town, and Troy and I talked a little bit about today that, um, the five thousand dollars, would, any money spent from that would go through the Selectmen, uh, and cover the funds to the Selectmen. Um, I think you're right, the Subcommittee does want to be involved with oversight from the Conservation. And Recreation said they would take it over once it became a town entity. But they would also have input right now.
So does that mean, does that mean the property will be sent back to the town for management? Because right now it's on the Conservation, so if Recreation takes it over, that, that ultimately means the Board of Selectmen responsible for the property then?
Well, I think the, this section would be the Recreation, and the rest of it would still be managed by the Conservation, although the lease has to come under the Selectmen. It was bought with Conservation funds, so it's, you know, just this little parcel that would be the Recreation Commission taking care of.
So they would be responsible for the roadway, the parking lot, and the path down, and the whatever docking, whatever landing area we have down.
Right, so, well, well, let's realize that we can say that, but it's not going to stop the Conservation Commission from coming in ten years from now and saying,
It's my property.
I don't like the way this is being done.
Right.
This is our property.
That's why I asked the question.
Well, back up a little bit. Conservation bought it, but we don't own it. The town owns it.
But you have the management rights to it.
Right.
The, the town doesn't. That's the issue with the Conservation Commission, is that you guys now take the ownership of it.
No, we don't, we don't own that.
We can't tell you what to do.
So I think that's, see, that's a good point, and I think, you know, everyone sitting here today all has these good intentions. Everyone's been working together as a team, but you get ten years down the road, things start changing down at the River Access area, and Conservation starts questioning things, because they weren't, the members at, at that point in time weren't around. So probably there, there needs to be some type of formal document that we do put together. Um, memorandum of understanding, or some resolution that the Conservation Commission adopts. So that there is some formal record, uh, on file stating what the intent is and the long-term, um, responsibilities of, you know, management of, and upkeep of the property.
Troy, I think that's a great idea, and as long as our legal counsel approves that, and as long as the Conservation Commission does that, maybe there's like a said section of the property that gets delineated as recreational use. But I think that in a way, the Conservation Commission has to give up their power.
On that section?
On that little piece. Not that they would be absolved of their rights to say that it's not being maintained, or that it's, it has it to the rest of the property that they own. I just think that if it's going to come under the town's direction, they have to kind of grant the power to rule it.
To, to Recreation?
Yeah.
When did, who, I, I'm part of the Recreation Commission. We never decided, and nobody's even talked about it with us, the, the Recreation was going to manage this. We never voted on it, we've never had a discussion. Is John Bryant making decisions for us at this point?
No, you don't, you don't have-
See, that's a-
You don't have, you don't have to write. It's the Conservation's property. It's theirs.
No, 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 the, the point I'm making is Recreation, all of a sudden, has onus to this, but we have never discussed it.
So that was before, before you came on, because that was earlier on they were discussing they would be willing to take it over as a, as sort of a management and upkeep of the property.
We hadn't even started talking about it before then.
Yes, we did.
Did we?
Yes.
Okay, so you guys have voted on it then, before I came along, and?
As far as I know, there was no vote. This is an understanding. I agree with you, it should be taken up by the Commission. I understand, because what is the financial impact? What's going to be upkeep? And I think that's all come out after we build it. I mean, it's a gravel road, it backs its cleaning, you know.
I mean, who's gonna, you know, there's gonna be, there's, there's definitely going to be, you know, vegetation to maintain. Who does that? Now, all of a sudden, are we going to bring a contractor in to do that? Or is that, are you expecting Highway to do that, or?
No, be a contractor.
Okay. And who's going to do the trash? Like, it's a ca- I know it's a carry-in, carry-out, but there's going to definitely be trash to be picked up, and, um, you know, people are just, you know, they have a tendency of leaving things behind. So, I mean, these are the things that like, you know, we've never discussed it through rec in the last year.
It definitely needs to go to the Recreation Commission and, and-
So we can't assume that the Recreation's going to do this, because we haven't discussed it yet.
I, I think that's where you get the sign-off. Maybe it's a three-way, it's a three-way sign-off. Rec Commission, Board of Selectmen, Conservation, that addresses these, these issues. Because we are, I think, everyone's got good intentions. We've had a public hearing, uh, on this. As you recall, the Board held a public hearing. We had-
And John Bryant was-
And John Bryant was here.
And they, it was talked about at that point. I, I, to your point, I, I think you're right. There's probably been no formal vote on doing it. I think the members at the time were, yeah, we want this, right? This is something, this is part of Recreation. We want to be able to do it. We should take it, and we should manage it. But that hasn't been brought up, right, in Deloitte?
But I mean, if, if, if our con- you know, the contractor that we have, if we decide to go with them for this, if they come through and say, well, it's going to cost you, you know, four thousand dollars a year, well then how do we absorb that into our budget, if it's, you know, be- being built this year? Those are the questions I got. That's, that's the point I'm making.
I don't see how it could cost that, I mean-
Well, we don't know. I mean, who knows?
You're going to have to run a lawnmower up each side of it.
And around the trees, and string trim around the fence.
They ain't gonna, they don't do that anywhere else.
Yeah, they just run it along the line.
To do it right, you know, but-
But they'll run it around the line down here.
I'm just saying, I mean, you know, I just, I just want to make sure that we have every angle figured out so the Recreation Commission doesn't have a, an increase in budget that's like-
They're going to have an increase.
Let's be on what they want.
When Jeff Wayne comes on, when Jeff Wayne comes online, is there an increase in budget?
That was already bid as part of this year.
There'll be an additional, I'm, I'm sure it'll be more than, than that, right? Every, every property we build out is going to be the increase of the Rec Commission. That's where it belongs. It's a value, it's an asset. We need to take care of it.
It's not just the road part of it, neither. It's the path that's going down there as well.
Yeah.
You know, that's another part that needs to be maintained.
You know, people don't want to walk through hip, hip tall grass, so are they going to string trim that, or maintain that somehow? I mean, there's, there's a lot to consider with the na- you got a five hundred foot natural path going down to it.
When's the next Rec Commission meeting?
Uh, tomorrow night.
I guess you can bring it up.
Yes. But I don't want to make any assumptions today. That's the point I'm making, is I don't want to assume that-
Well, the assumption is any Rec, any Rec property is run, managed by the Rec Commission, and John Bryant, representing the Commission, has locally supported it as part of a Rec project. So, I mean, that's a given. I think you need to bring up your concerns with them and make sure they- They should take, in my opinion, they should take a vote tomorrow night going, yes, we are in support of that project, and we will inherit it after the fact.
I mean, I'm not trying to stop the project at all. I mean, obviously, the, uh, the, the point I'm making is I just want them to, you know, evaluate what the potential cost will be and, and budget for it, so.
Comment. Ken, Joan, maybe this is a question for you. How is the conservation area handled, and how is Parker Park handled?
Parker Park's Recreation Commission. Um, always has been Recreation Commission. Other lands, we have volunteers going and weed whack and best we can. We mu- we occasionally mow, we have a big mower, we mow Morse Falls area.
Yeah, I think Jack's helped out with Morse Falls too. And I don't think Parker, Park has been taken care of in a while, has it? I mean, I've been down there, it's always-
Those trails are disappearing in the stream bed.
I haven't been down there in a year, probably.
You can't walk along them anymore, because you're, you're, you're right on the edge of the stream. It's just been eroded so much.
Does the Rec Commission know they own, they own that? It's going to be a good question. Are they aware that they own and manage all that property?
How do they own, why, I don't understand how it's theirs.
That, that one always has been under Recreation. I think it was willed that way, way back.
So, I think it's a good, another good question to ask, if they know they have that, and they probably should be trying to maintain it.
Oh, Morse Falls Park.
So, just a couple quick comments about this. This is the latest and greatest plan that was put forth. And just a few notes on this, is that we talked to Greg Jeffrey, gave us some input on how the parking area should be laid out, you know, distance, things like that. That's all taken care of. Uh, the path to the river, Selectmen, Schaefer, is actually going to be a hard-packed path.
Okay.
It's not just going to be free-form, you just walk down, where actually the, the plan is to actually put gravel in there and pack that down.
Like a four-foot path or so, or?
Pretty much, yep. You need to at least have three feet. So, we went by ADA regulation, so that will be hard-packed.
Okay.
Three feet. And then the fence, the debate now is to just not even really have a fence and keep it pretty much open all the way through the field.
That's going to save you a ton of money too.
I thought the, uh, the farmers wanted the fence.
It's, it's up in the air. Um, they don't, they just want to be assured that ATVs and whatever is not going to get in there. But ATVs don't go there now. Okay, we, we'll have the gravel access. We're maybe thinking fir trees on the southern border and nothing on the northern border, because the tractor's going to need to turn, so it's going to need a pretty good area to turn the tractor and go back. Put a fence, and it's going to have to be that much further into the field.
And a couple folks mentioned that having the fence, I go back and forth on it as well, but a couple folks mentioned that having the fence will kind of break, break the field, you know, in the two almost. You know, if you don't have a fence, it's just free-flowing. Doesn't matter to me personally, but.
I, yeah, I guess my only concern would be people down there, kids running through the field. They don't do it today because there's no access down there, other than the main road.
We definitely would have to have signage at, at the beginning and-
There would be an initial fence coming in off 3A with a gate.
Okay, yeah.
And then that would, if that's shut, then you can't really have access to it unless you go around it.
But that's, when's that gate going to close?
Excuse me?
When would that gate close?
The police department is going to close at sun, at sun, sunset, right? That's what I think we heard.
We have done that in the past, yeah.
Why would they do that every day?
Yeah, it's not going to open.
I mean, the gate, the gate, the gate to the access path for the river, that makes sense that that gets locked. But the gate for the road?
Well, at that point, you can think about that, though. You have, after, if the sunset, if there's cars down there doing whatever they're doing, they're not going to be able to see it from the road, if it's the middle of the summer.
I, I think that this is going to be wide open to the road.
That's why we pulled it back up, so it would be visible from the road.
So if you get my property, you're going to be able to see the traffic down there?
Wasn't this supposed to be, like, down here?
Yeah, it was. I thought it was down here too.
Yep.
There's two reasons. The shoreline protection line is that blue line that, we didn't want to get into that permitting, the shoreline protection.
It's just a gravel parking area.
Well, you'd have to do a whole permit, though.
It's a piece of paper.
A yes permit?
Well, it's a municipality asking. It's usually easy, right?
But, but the bigger reason, to pull it back up here, then it's visible from the road, and you can see who's there, what's going on, a little better than if it was down over the nose, little knoll here.
So, what's-
If that's a fact, why don't you put it right up next to the road?
It's too far to walk down for the, to carry everything in.
They, they're already going.
It's heavy.
What, what, what kind of crops in this field is to be like, it's corn?
Corn up here and squash in here, and that, that's a sticking point too, because I'm not happy that corn gets planted every year in the same place, it's depleting the soil quite a bit.
Corns, the corn stalk is going to be higher. You're not going to see the cars in the middle of, middle of August.
Well, if you don't plant corn there, you will.
You don't have to sign a lease for somebody to farm it either.
But we always, that's a whole other topic, I think, part of the discussion, but if the, if the, if the, if the land is still going to be, and I'm going back to, we should, probably should have a gate in the front, but if the land is still being farmed, there's going to be a crop that potentially could over, type a parked car, and no one's going to see what's going down there in the summertime, when it's prime access for whatever you want to do down there. I think the gate needs to go in. That's, in my opinion, all along, but.
Let's meet there.
Two gates, a gate there and a gate.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I, although I, the second gate to me is wide, wide.
Well, gate up here for, no winter access, and then if the water is really high and running really fast, you don't want people down there. You know, Kurt, I think, had said, well, they take their own risk, but that's not the answer. You don't want them in there if the water's really high.
So you would close access to the walk path down, and when the sign says no, because of water, you should go.
So the other thing that I was, I heard that's a concern to me is if you get rid of the wood rail fence, and you put up a sign, I mean, yeah, signs, people really read those signs and take them serious.
Parking down a brickyard.
Keeps honest people honest. That's all it is.
So people who park down a brickyard are honest, they just don't follow the signs.
Yeah, don't, don't park between these signs. I'm not. I'm right next to it. We've all heard those too.
It's true.
I think, you know, I think the next step is, uh, and, and this is what I brought up at the last meeting, was to approach the, um, current farmer, to see if there's still interest in farming. And, you know, if we want to do another, um, lease agreement, and to work with them to see, you know, like we said, when the tractors are coming, and they get close to the parking lot area, getting close to the driveway, they probably need, my guess, depending on, you know, the direction of the, um, cornstalks, they need at least a tractor and a half-length, uh, to be able to turn the, the equipment around, so. So I think you're going to have some buffer from this gravelled area of just no corn, but just some type of vegetation growing, just turned soil, I guess. So do they want a fence? Do they want, I mean, fences look great, long-term, their maintenance, um, a cost item. Boulders are always, uh, the long-term, no-cost solution.
That's part of the original plan, isn't it?
It was, but-
That don't get weed-whacked around, and then it gets overgrown, and it looks awful, and you look like you're cheaped out.
Yeah, well, some, some landscaping projects, they get weed-whacked around, they look okay, they put a tree between the boulders.
When this was first proposed, the thing that I heard that sounded great to me, was even if it was only the first hundred feet, was the nice white post and rail vinyl fence. Does it cost money? You bet it does. Does it look nice from the road? Yes, of course it does. Why wouldn't we do that?
Yeah, the first hundred feet, that's not really bad, it's not a bad idea.
It still could.
It's kind of like a, here's our entryway to our new area. It doesn't even have to carry the whole way down.
Yeah.
But it's, it's, it's a nice flowing direction. It's, I don't know.
And then if you were going to drive around it, you'd get stuck in the, in the field, so you better not drive around.
Right. Just saying.
I agree with you.
Sometimes it costs money to have things and make them work properly.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it, it comes down to really probably it's going to be a learning experience. I think a fence came up because we were looking for security to prevent, um, vehicles and pedestrians from entering into the crop area. So, if that's the purpose of the fence, then, you know, you need to have a fence the entire length from the road all the way to the, the woods. If that's, if that's the purpose of the fence. If the purpose of the fence is just to sort of delineate the entrance and have it for aesthetic reasons, then we can, you know, the committee can work with that, but, I mean, there's-
I mean, originally, they wanted a fence all the way down and put a gate in the middle so that the farmer could go across.
Well, that's what we would have to do if we fenced it all the way down, we'd have to-
And if you're going to want that kind of fence, you put up a chain-link fence. That's what keeps people out. Split rail fences don't keep people, keep people out. They still cross, they don't-
We don't need to spend thirty thousand or fifty thousand dollars to do what the farmer wants that is going to want to lease this back from us at the cheapest possible rate. If we do what we need to do, and we make a conducive for them, it's their choice if they rent it or lease it or not.
Yeah.
Not that I'm trying to put any harm on anybody, but-
No, I agree. I thoroughly agree.
It's, it's a very small area that we're, that we're going through, and I understand that they don't want people going into their crops. Makes perfect sense to me. But we just have to kind of weigh it all out.
Yeah. Economically, does it make sense?
So I think we leave this as the Subcommittee that's been in place from start continues to work. I work with legal counsel to come up with whatever the right document is that, that, you know, ties the Selectmen, Conservation Commission, and Rec Commission into, uh, an understanding of, um, and then if the Board has no objections, I can make contact to the farmer and start some, uh, discussions with the farmer regarding the lease. Because my concern is, uh, you know, we need to start communicating with the farmer so that they understand, they need to know what area, one, they need to let us know if they plan on leasing it, and two, where they're, you know, where are we going to disturb, uh, the farmer?
Yeah, we should at least stake out what we're going to-
Yeah.
Assume we can.
Yep. The intention is, uh, assuming all the chips fall into place, would be to start construction sometime in April. Dries out.
Yeah, brown dries up and thaws out, yeah.
I don't know what the planting season is. Seems to me it's early May, late April, something like that.
No, I don't, I'm not sure.
Well, we should be able to find out once we reach out to the, the, the previous leasers. Okay. Good.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, Troy, in, in conjunction with that, could you reach out to the, uh, the farmer that we leased the land to? Ask them what dates that they would, um, be planning on putting their crop in?
Right, or prepping the soil too, right?
And can you also try to research, um, what thirteen acres of farmland is worth to lease?
Yeah, you can try. I've been through the exercise before. It's interesting.
Too bad you couldn't take the lease money, put it into a fund to maintain the road.
Jason, you just said something out loud that I was thinking all along.
Self-funded.
Well, I probably couldn't do this year, but that's something we can think about putting on next year, right? It's, I think, any, any money that isn't earned from that property can go into a fund to maintain the site. How, how, how small or large it is, right?
Net zero.
It'd be the goal, right?
Be a win for everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the NHDOT Municipal Works Zone Agreement.
This is, uh, we've, the Boards signed one of these before, I think actually when they did some work last year on just doing the, uh, the shim work, um, out there on 3A. But this is directly related to the planned, uh, paving project, uh, this summer. New Hampshire DLT is going to be paving from Page Road northerly all the way to the Litchfield-Manchester town line. So they, um, they require, they use their own flaggers for these projects, and they need to reach out to the Selectmen, uh, have an agreement in place that there's an understanding that they can do their own traffic control. I've consulted with the police chief. Uh, he's in agreement with this. He's done this before. Uh, because DLT owns the road, he works with them. Uh, however, if this was a company like Comcast, Eversource, they, uh, we would be requiring special detail.
Okay. Do I have any discussion from the Board? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the, uh, New Hampshire Department of Transportation's Municipal Works Zone Agreement for the repaving this spring of Route 3A.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Does that motion cover it?
Was that enough words?
Yeah.
As long as I have evidence that I can sign the document.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Dot, 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 dot. There you go, there's a few extra spaces for you. What am I supposed to say?
No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstain. Motion carries four zero zero. All those opposed, all those abstain. Motion carries four zero zero. Manchester National Stormwater Management Agreement. We'll do it after this.
Okay, as, uh, many of you are probably aware, I've been attending monthly meetings, uh, at the National Regional Planning Commission. They're working with the Southern New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission, uh, together. And we've created this coalition called the Nashua and Manchester Regional Stormwater Coalition. And it's sort of modeled after the Seacoast Stormwater Coalition. They've been, the Seacoast has, uh, been doing stormwater management for many years. So we've met with members of the Seacoast Stormwater Coalition. They've given us, uh, you know, updates on what they've done as a group. Um, we've had New Hampshire DES officials, they actually attend these meetings on a monthly basis. And everyone's worked really hard at coming up with a plan. So that all the communities that, uh, are involved in this stormwater management program required by the EPA. It's about twenty-five of them that we're working with in this group. We're looking at a way to see if we can pool all of our resources, um, to, to really. Streamline the whole permitting process for what we can do as a group. For example, if we have public, one of the requirements in the permit is that we have. Uh, three or four public outreach informational meetings held each year. And if we can use this group, uh, to host those, uh, training sessions. Then it can be an actual checkoff box for us and all the other communities. And all the training will be consistent, you know, the same message will be delivered to the same communities. Looking at a way to leverage some grant funding so that maybe we could do something, um. You know, expand the mapping requirements, uh, together as a whole group and getting, you know, a fifty-fifty match through EPA. Or DES. So what the agreement is, uh, we're looking right now is that each community out of the twenty-five. We're hopeful that we get, um, at a minimum about nineteen of them. There, we've had nineteen communities attend the meetings. They've shown that commitment and then, so, uh, looking for a two thousand dollar contribution from each town. It's just a straight-out contribution. We didn't wanna get involved in population, if you're a city or not. Um, and this, at this point in time, this money would just be seed money. We, we think that this money will go a long ways. It's not something that's gonna be coming back and asked for next year. We're looking to, uh, really extend, um, this money, uh, for several years and hopeful, they're very hopeful. Uh, that we'll be able to get some matching grant funds. We've not spent, for like the last three years. Uh, one penny on the stormwater management. Um, so this would be the first time that we, we actually start, uh, you know, to spend some money.
Questions or comments from the board?
I think it's a good idea. At least the training will be consistent versus us trying to do it ourselves.
Can I make a motion?
You sure?
Okay.
I'm gonna redeem myself on this one. Alright, you ready?
You gonna read the one that's in yellow this time?
I didn't wanna say it out loud.
I was improvising, alright. I moved to authorize the expenditure of two thousand dollars from encumbered funds for the purpose. And authorize the town administrator to sign the Nashua and Manchester Regional Stormwater Coalition agreement.
Very good.
Did I read that alright?
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstain. Motion carries four zero zero.
It is always good when communities work together though. Usually pays off, hopefully.
The regional planning commissions are, you know, just invaluable. They've done all this work so far for no charge and it's good.
It's nice that the responsibilities are even anyway, so it's not, you know, spiking one or the other, so.
Alright, so it's six forty. I'm gonna open up public comment. Does anybody have any public input they wanna present? Hearing none, I close public comment.
I was hopeful. I always thought Jason always had something to say.
He was moving slowly, I was like waiting for him.
I was listening to the stormwater stuff, that's my main area of business.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Fifth item on the agenda, utility assessment proposal. Troy?
Alright, I'm not asking for the board, um, any action this evening, I just wanted to introduce this to you. George Sansucci is the, um, utility assessor that we've hired to represent the town. In the Panachuk, um, property tax abatement case, which is, uh, at the end of this week, we'll be going to a mediation session. In talking with him, he, he said, you know, really, I think the town of Litchfield. Is not being aggressive enough in its assessment of all your utilities that you have in your community. And my company, um, can come in, do an assessment, probably increase your tax base. Quite a bit and, you know, he's, he's the one company in the state that's, that's handling. I don't know, thirty, forty communities, uh, throughout the state. So when there are big, um, issues going on. And you have Fairpoint Communications filing an abatement with every single town. He's able to, um, represent all those communities. He consolidates the cases. So that each community pays a sort of a prorated basis, um, on that defense. So I just want, hi- his cost is not cheap. Um, he was, in his proposal, it would be thirty thousand dollars per year. For this year and next year. I told him that, well, it's kinda too late this year, we've already set our budgets. Um, but he said there's, you know, we could, we could structure the agreement so that the first payment would be, uh, due and payable. In two thousand nineteen. So there's some room there to, to restructure the payment schedule. Um, I just think that th- this weekend, or this Friday, maybe have an opportunity for Chairman Lemire, Selectman Schaefer. Um, you know, to talk to Mr. Sansucci about this, uh, and then we come back and talk to you folks and see if we think it has any merit. Um, Mr. Sansucci would be available to come down and talk to you as, as well, but I think having a conversation with him face-to-face Friday, uh, would be the first step.
Well, I'm interested to see how it works out this week.
Well, I'm a little concerned about, there's a lot going on in the state right now with utility assessments and the laws could be changing and, you know.
Well, but now turn the page and it's a regular thing for these utilities to come back and fight us. On all the rates that we're charging now and he thinks he's gonna get more? How much more are we gonna spend in legal fees fighting it?
There's, there's that risk analysis that the, that the board of selectmen would have to, uh, consider. But in the past, I know that Mr. Sansucci has, um. He, he's done a terrific job at calculating the, the assessment of, of utilities. But there are some issues going on statewide where, you know, we have utility companies, um. Lobbying Concord really hard to change the assessment on how they're assessed. So it's more standard throughout the state.
So he, he would take over, if we were to do this, he would take over for Avatar, cause Avatar.
We take over only the utilities. So that's all he does.
Didn't we already use him at one point? Didn't we, what, the name rings a bell to me.
Well, we, we used him, um, he's, he's probably met with him once here when we've hired him to do, represent the town. Uh, in the Panachuk of Property Tax.
That's what it was, okay, yeah.
So what do we pay Avatar for that service now?
So right now, it's all bundled into one contract and I think it's about forty-eight thousand dollars a year.
For the whole contract?
Yeah.
Safe to say, we're not gonna save thirty thousand dollars from them, correct?
No.
Yeah.
I think their strong, I really think their stronghold is, uh, residential assessing.
Right.
I don't, I think they do the utility, but as far as, uh. Being real aggressive with it, I'm not sure how.
I remember there being a discussion where they didn't wanna do it anymore, but then they fell back in line for whatever reason. Wasn't it Gary, right?
Yeah, Gary Reverge.
Yeah, he didn't wanna, he was like.
Kinda semi-retired now and he's the only one in Avatar, as I understand, he's really the, the utility guy at Avatar.
It's probably time to think of something, but your, your point's valid. I mean, no matter what we do, they're gonna fight us to the end and.
Well, that's it, you know, you could, you could pick up an extra three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollars in tax revenue. But you, you might be faced with a hundred thousand dollars worth of legal defense too, so.
Any more questions or comments from the board about this? Looks like we're onto other business. Administrator report.
Alright, just a reminder that we have the, uh, Panachuk Water Tax Abatement Mediation Session this Friday at eleven o'clock, it'll be in Concord. And I'll, I'll reach out to Selectman Schaefer and Chairman Lemire, make sure, uh, we're still on schedule for that. I have a stormwater coalition meeting tomorrow, um, at National Regional Planning Commission, so everyone's gonna be coming back. Hopefully, uh, giving feedback from their communities, whether or not they're gonna be committing, uh, to the agreement or not. Working on the two thousand eighteen voter guide, uh, insert for the Hudson Litchfield News. Uh, I've met with the fire chief this morning, he's gonna be working on, uh, the information for the fire. So we'll be working on that over the next week and a half. Close next Monday for President's Day. Uh, and also, just in your packet of information there, I was provided a quote for, uh. And again, this is just, just information I'm sharing with you. Uh, that Jack went out and approached John Deere, uh, to see what the cost would be to purchase a tractor. With a mower, brand new. Uh, he did not get a quote for a snow blower, but just, just to give us an idea of what you'd be looking at. You can see it's, um, at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a tractor with a mower, that's with the articulated arm. Just kinda wanted to know where we were at, like.
That's what they go for unfortunately.
Then you figure out where, where we wanna go.
Well, put, now put a snow blower attachment on this thing, it'll be even more, it'll be too big.
Can't drive it under trees.
Yes, we can't drive trucks.
How you gonna drive a nice, brand-new shiny mower?
Hundred and twenty dollars for a lawnmower? You see, you see Hudson using it all the time.
It's expensive.
It's just wanting to know where we're at.
I didn't make the pricing, I didn't make it like that.
Obviously, we gotta figure out, because remember, we still have not figured out our plan of action. We've not done roadside mowing for two years. And this is something I've, we've, we've got to figure out what we're doing.
Can we bring in a contract to do it? Can we have a contract to do it?
We bring a contractor usually.
No, because now we have new issue with insurance.
We used to rent the equipment for a week or two weeks and then we ran into legal issues with the insurance company over, um.
Oh, I, that was last.
Rental agreement.
It was just the rental agreement.
The rental agreement was never a problem before, um, and then recently.
Bring into a lawyer until you really want. This was about if, if we broke it, we end up paying the full replacement cost, something like that, I don't remember that now.
But that's if we, if we maintain responsibility for the machine, but if we had a guy come in that we were paying. Then it wouldn't be an insurance issue. They, they have their own insurance.
And then why do we have a highway department? These are all things where the summertime, when they're not doing roadwork, they can do that.
Stop right there. We have a highway department of one.
Two, hopefully, but yes, I ignore.
One and a half.
I mean, that's a, listen, at the end of the day, if.
I mean, we can buy all the hundred thousand dollar things we want. If we got nobody to run them, it's useless to buy them.
We, we need, then if that's a real issue, and I agree with you, then we need to, there's budget in the bu- there's budget for people at that department. There, we need to send the road agent a note saying, he is to hire himself a second charer, a second guy, full-time. Or whatever, whatever in the budget, I think it's.
Part-time.
Thirty-two hours, whatever it was. He needs to find somebody, he needs to do it pronto. I, I, you know, to me, it's a smoking, you know, it's, it's, it's a ticking time bomb. We need to do it, let's do it.
I said that three years ago.
You're not gonna cut his hours.
Three years ago, I said that. I said, we should hire four people over there. We don't, we have too much work that doesn't get done. We have one guy that tries to do it all.
I, so if that's, if you think that's the right way to go, then we need to send a message to the, to him saying. The board is instructing you to go find yourself several candidates and bring them forward to be hired as part of that department and we'll figure out how to make it that happen.
I've said it all, uh, we need to do a needs assessment on the highway department, just like we did the police department. So there's no questions going forward and as the chief still has today, almost ten years later. A piece of paper that says, this is the needs.
So let me ask you this question.
Makes it easy to sell.
Do we, do we all agree he needs a second guy?
I don't know.
I, I can agree, he needs three.
Okay, so let's encourage him, get advertised in the paper, get some candidates in here. Let, you know, let him get a guy that can help him do his job. If we're gonna do a needs assessment, I agree with you, let's do it. Let's find the money to do it.
He already has a guy and does he utilize the guy? I don't know, I mean, I've.
Which guy are we talking about?
There's a, there's a, what's his name, Justin?
Yeah, it's a fairly new one, right?
Yeah, he just started like about three, what, he started in.
I thought he brought somebody on. I, when, when Les left, I think he was short sighted, short for a while, but I think he, I thought he brought somebody on.
But then summertime, he will need that, that summer help that he typically has.
Yeah, he does bring up summer help for that.
Bowling and stuff, but, um, the kid that he usually brings in is done, he was done last year. He done his four years, um. And he's moving, you know, he has a real job now, I guess, after graduating.
I mean, like I said, i- if, if, if we have concerns of the department and we need to encourage him. Town administrator, we're asking you to go put an ad out for, for, you know, another road worker, labor and.
Well, should we do a needs assessment?
This is, but we need, we know we need one anyway.
This is, this is where my argument's been all along. Three years ago, I said we needed to hire more people.
And I thought he was.
And then what we get back is that there's nobody that'll take the job.
Cause of the pay?
I have no idea.
So let's find out.
So I said do a needs assessment and then everybody says, hold on, we don't need to do that. And it's money that we don't need to spend. We all know that. And, and he does a great job with what he has. But.
Hard thing with the, with the part-timer, you're looking for a part-timer year-round, thirty-two hours, no benefits, no vacation time, no sick time. No benefits. So it's hard to find someone that'll be willing to work for the town, commit thirty-two hours a week, fifty-two weeks out of the year, no benefits.
What, what's it, what's in that budget now for, what's in their, what's in that budget now for labor?
So we have, um, we have, we have the full, I call it full-time, we have the thirty-two hour position. Which we do have, um, the young, uh, I call him the young kid, but Justin's been hired and he's doing that position right now. And then you have twenty-six weeks for the seasonal help.
How come we didn't see Justin when he got hired? Cause he's part-timer. Okay, I'm, I answered my own question. I just, we always seem to have this battle about seeing who we hire and I'm trying to figure out what that, the line is, I think it's.
No, I think I talked to the board about that.
He started like beginning of December, so somewhere around.
I, I've seen him, so I know he's there, but I said, no, how many hours just put in? Is there money, is there money in his budget for another person?
For another week, it's, I'd have to go take a look because we went a period of time, um, well, no, Justin came on shortly after the, the start of the budget. So right now, Justin is that thirty-two hour, uh, position. But then we have, uh, another twenty-six weeks for seasonal. So it's possible we could, you know, start advertising, see if you could, you know, bring on a seasonal person. You also have the, um. The contracted line. So if you use less contracted, you know, services, there's some money there.
I saw, I'm wondering if we can go ahead and put out for a full-time position and, cause there was a full-time position there before Jack, before Jack was a road agent. And I think Jack's assumed some of that responsibility, but, and he's a full-time employee himself. I, I don't see why.
Who was the full-time position?
It was, it was before, it was a guy who was working with Jack when Jack first came over as elected road agent, I believe. I can't remember his name.
Well, let me take a look at that and see, because I.
I don't know who he was.
I think that's what the board needs, you need to look at. You, you need to look at a position that's gonna have benefits. So you can actually attract someone. Gilly?
That's who it was, okay, thank you. Um, yeah, and he retired and we have never really, you know, Jack's assumed.
But he was full-time?
I believe so.
I didn't think he was.
I believe so.
Where, where are we on the, like, the overtime for Jack?
Well, you just started the new, we just started the new.
Yeah, well, you could pull last year's news, right?
Yeah, I mean, but it's true, there's money there in overtime too.
I think the only problem with the overtime, you gotta, you gotta, you have to somehow back out the snow plowing.
Yeah.
Cause that's something separate, but, um.
The overtime only occurs during snow plow season. When, when it occurs outside plowing season, it's a down tree after hours. That's, uh, we had a sinkhole, we had a sinkhole.
Yeah, it's all just.
Doesn't really occur that often.
No, I, I can't.
No, I, I can't say enough that I just, I see this hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for a tractor with a lawnmower. I think it's crazy. But what's crazier is that we don't really have people to run them. And we can't expect Jack to do everything.
Yeah, I, I think we need to encourage him to do it and if it means, go put an ad out, see what can for a budget, go put an ad out to kind of find candidates and then figure out what we have to do to make it happen. And again, I, I, I understand the feedback we've given them back, I, I understand the feedback we've had in the past by the, the needs assessment. The, the highway department seems to be well-run. We know our, we know our twenty-five-year plan. There's a lot of things that are out there. There may be arguments about how the garage is capped and the, the office is capped, that kind of thing. But the department itself, those activities occur, the, the projects he's planned for get done. So maybe we need to go figure out what else is not getting done.
To, to be perfectly clear, and this is just me, when it, when after the police department, I think that they did the needs assessment cause they were trying to screw the police department. In no way am I trying to screw Jack.
We know that.
I'm trying to help Jack.
We know that. I know that, I don't-
And I think that Jack, too many times, sits back and says, okay, I'll do it. Okay, I'll do it. And the problem is, it's not the fact that he's gonna do it, it's the fact of what else is getting left behind because he's now been asked to do this. We need more people. A needs assessment just puts everything in front of everybody so it's perfectly clear what is needed, what needs to change, and how things can be done better.
Well, of course, the, the assessment would, um, I think, what would happen is, I would, M R I would probably be the company that would do it. They would come in and meet with the board, talk to you about, what is it that you want? Just say someone said, well, you know, we wanna take a look at, um, we, we have a highway department, but yet we have buildings and grounds, we've got wreck facilities that we're paying fifty, seventy thousand dollars a year to, to mow grass. We're doing cemeteries, we're doing this, we're doing that.
You could probably hire a full-time guy down there.
Can you take a look at all of our operations and tell us?
And in the summer, only have to mow lawn and become a wash.
We have plow drivers in the winter.
But what I'm saying is, you could hire one person and just stop contracting out all the mowing. And almost wash right there. And then you still have him for all the time he's not mowing lawn. For brush trimming along the bike path and moving, you know, snow removal and stuff like that.
Driving a new tractor to mow the rest of the path. Or the roadside mowing.
And, and here's, here's my argument. I, I agree with the M R I study. I think we need it and, because we never talk about the police this way. We never talk about the fire department this way, but we're always talking about what the highway department's needs are. Because, you know, do we really have to go out and buy a hundred twenty thousand dollar tractor? Well, do we, don't we? I don't know. M R I should tell us what our needs are and maybe it's cheaper to subcontract a company for a few years. But the point I'm making is, is that we're kind of patching and band-aiding the highway department together without a plan. And, you know, the police department has a plan, the fire department has a plan, highway department doesn't have a plan. I think the plan for when the police po, police department got their assessment done was perfect because it put it in front of everybody what needed to be done, what, I, I think there was a couple of minor things that they said weren't right, but it was more like a procedural thing, but most of it was, hey, you're deficient. You're deficient. You're deficient.
And no one's gonna believe us, no one's gonna believe Jack, no one's gonna believe us.
Sure.
We try to tell the taxpayers, you're deficient. You need three point two, you know, drivers.
Well, I think, you know, if you, even if it's-
It's an independent study.
Even if you have the M R I, even if you have an assessment, people are gonna still disagree with it because we're, we've worked this way for so long.
Yeah.
I agree, i- if we're gonna do an assessment, let's do the assessment. The question, do we, do we hold off trying to find an extra person to fill in the blank?
Yeah.
I think you still need to-
I, I think you still-
For the summer help, yeah, yeah.
I think, I think you still try to find that, but I think the assessment's gonna show a lot more areas where we need to focus on too.
I think if we put out for another part-time position up to thirty-two hours a week, I'm sure that, but make sure that Jack's on board with it. I don't want Jack to say, well, I'm not gonna have anything for the guy to do. Because if he says that, then obviously, we would be overstepping him by trying to tell him to hire somebody.
Okay.
Would you agree?
No, I would agree that, yeah.
But on the flip side, you put a tractor on here with a mower and now it's gonna turn into Troy. Can you contact M R I and try to get us a ballpark figure of what it would cost to give us a needs assessment?
Can we, and do we have impact fees to pay for that? How do we pay for that?
Well, I'm sure we'll get impact fees because the apartments down, the south end of town. Paid out, so we are good on those. I, I forget how much we have, but, uh, the houses are gonna be going online too. So that'll, that'll, again, fulfill, refill. Yeah.
So we'll have money. Is there money in the, uh?
Well, we typically, I'm sure there will be some.
Okay, I'll make, I'll talk with Jack and I'll, um, I'll reach out to M R I.
I was gonna say, and please tell Jack about this conversation so that he doesn't get a second hand or whatever, or whatever. And that he understands exactly what our intention is, because I don't want Jack thinking that we're going crazy after him like what happened when it happened with the police. I don't want him to think that.
Idea is to help him figure out where, where that department needs to grow to and so he can help build that plan and make it happen.
How was that? Good, smooth.
My report's done.
Selectmen reports. Mr. Schaefer?
I have nothing on rec. We have a rec meeting tomorrow night and I'll have some more by then.
Excellent. Mr. Bork?
I went to, uh, planning board Tuesday, last Tuesday. They talked about, I don't know how many people watched it, but, uh, Mel's is looking to expand their business over there, by adding a bumper pool, the bumper boats, and over there, some inflatables out back and then, one of the things that I thought was pretty cool is they're talking about, uh, twenty-one, I think it's twenty-one acre paintball, um, area across the street from them. So that's virtually what the meeting was on. Well, with exception of that, there rather wasn't too much.
I didn't know, the paint, the paintball's across the street.
Yeah, it's across the street.
We got a lot of land over there.
It's with the old, old slide parkway. That'd be cool.
Yeah, so, so, some neat things.
Excellent. I have nothing. Mr. Brunel?
Um, no, budget season's finished. I wasn't able to attend the school deliberative, but, uh, here it went well. I haven't anything else going on. We haven't ever talked about. I'm done.
Okay. We have no items moved from consent. We have no other business. Our next meeting for the board of selectmen is Monday, February twenty-sixth at six P M. And we have Pat Jewett Award Day, Monday, March fifth at six thirty P M. Six thirty?
Six thirty.
Okay. And... Otherwise, now we have a non-public. So, um, I make a motion to go into non-public session per hour, say ninety-one A, three-two A for compensation. We will do a roll call vote. Mr. Brunel?
Yes.
Mr. Perry, yes. Mr. Bork?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay, so we are now going into non-public session. We will only come out of non-public session to adjourn our meeting. So with that said, thank you for watching, everyone. Have a nice night.